Okay, we'll call a meeting to order and stand for the singing of O Canada.
(Singing) O Canada, our home and native land, true patriot of love in all thy sons coming. With glowing hearts we sing because the true north, strong and free. From far and wide, O Canada, we stand on guard for thee, God deeper and glorious and green. O Canada, we stand on guard for thee. O Canada, we stand on guard for thee.
Packet of attendance, Linda, you're good? Declarations of conflict of interest, anyone? Approval of minutes, Town Council, June 11th, 2015. Oh, approval of agenda, any additions or deletions? Sorry about that. And we have the additions. Everybody has a copy of the additions? Okay, so we have, we're going to delete seven, introduction of fire department officers, and we're adding 12A downtown police office. Oh, we're not. Okay, we're deleting 12A, we're taking that off of there. So it's just the elementary school. Everybody good with that? Ken, did you, or somebody made that motion? Okay.
Second.
Moved and seconded, discussion?
Question.
Questions been called, all those in favor? Aye. Contrary? Motion carried. Councillor Dennis, you moved for the Town Council minutes. I have a seconder. Moved and seconded, discussion?
Question.
Questions been called, all those in favor? Aye. Contrary? Motion carried. Committee of the whole, June 25th, 2015.
So moved.
Moved and seconded, any discussion? Questions been called, all those in favor? Aye. Contrary? Motion carried. Business arising, sewer connection bylaw, second reading. CAO? Or do I have a, oh, I can't believe that, I just did that again. I pressed my green button. Go ahead, CAO.
Thank you, worship. So this is second reading of some amendments to the sewer connection bylaw, so it would be appropriate at this time to invite anyone from the public who wishes to speak prior to council considering the motion to approve second reading.
Okay. So would anyone in the audience, in the public, like to speak to this? Sewer connection bylaw? Anyone in the audience like to speak to this? Third request, would anybody in the audience like to speak to this? Oh, hearing no one. I am looking for a motion for this bylaw, for the, motion to approve, or whatever you, okay?
Second.
Deputy Mayor and Councillor Mooney, any discussion?
Question.
Questions been called, all those in favor? Aye. Contrary? Motion carried. Amended intermunicipal agreement, 2015. CAO?
Thank you, worship. This is probably a very familiar document to many of you. This is the intermunicipal agreement that creates the REN, and there was a requirement that we ask for the municipalities to consider a couple of amendments. One of them has to do with the, the, oh, I'm trying to find the right word, dissolving or disbanding of the Department of Economic and Rural Development, and so they had positions on the REN Liaison Oversight Committee, and since they no longer exist, the agreement needs to be changed to reflect that. The other thing is that originally the Audit Committee was a committee, or conceived to be a committee of the Liaison and Oversight Committee, but through consultation with legal advisers and auditors, it was determined that the Audit Committee, in fact, should be a committee of the Board of Directors. And so those changes have been reflected in this amended intermunicipal agreement, and so we're looking for each of the six municipalities to approve the amended agreement.
I think a motion to approve the amended agreement.
Moved and seconded, any discussion? Go ahead, Councillor Lancel.
Well, just a question here, because I know very little about the REN. I know it exists. So this has been kicking around since, for how many months or years has this document been crafting? And I'm just, I'm just kind of curious, because we got two items on the agenda tonight on REN. I don't hear anything about REN. And I'm reading this document, and there's some things that kind of interested me, and I wasn't, not too thrilled about some of the things in the X document coming up, but all about transparency. But will we ever be getting any, I'm just curious, I noticed they've advertised for more staff, which is exciting, because if you're advertising for more staff, that means there's tremendous economic development going on, that means there's all kinds of new projects in the works. I'm not seeing a lot of new projects in the works, but we're adding staff, and I'm wondering, is there any way, or are we allowed as elected officials to find out exactly what type of performance this REN is doing? Because I'm not seeing or hearing a lot, because I know we've got some good things happening with the Tin Mine, for example, but I somehow don't think the REN is involved with that project. And I've been hearing some rumbles and other things, but I know that's not so. Is there any way we could possibly get an update on the REN, or is that confidential, like for the last development agency we had?
It's absolutely not confidential. So it's been up and running, not at full capacity, for approximately a year. I think we were the first ones to get it, we were the first ones in the province, yeah, to have a board in place. So you start last year, you have to get your board in place, you have to get your liaison and oversight, you have to, there was just a lot of, a lot of pieces to pull together, first of all. They are just presently working on their strategic plan in two parts, which would be the strategy, how to go about what they're going to do, and then the action items, secondly. And they had, University St. Anne, and I want to say, do you remember when that was? It was a few months ago, three or four months ago, anyway, they had, they had quite a gathering of, how do I say this? They had, they had McSweeney there to help them formulate how they would go through with the, or how they would propose the strategic plan. So they had people from different industry sectors, everything from, my goodness, the fishery, the fishery, farming, aquaculture, everybody was in that room, somebody from each of those universities, government agencies, single businesses, things like that. So everybody, they took everything from that to formulate that strategic plan. What is important, what do we want to do, how are we going to go forward? So that's where they are now. They have, after a year, and we did ask the government if we could not do the total audit, but given everything that's happened with our DAs and things in the past, they opted to go with the, with the full audit. So we have the Audit Committee set up, and they'll be doing that this month, and then they're off and running. So you have a board, and you have the Executive Director, who is Angelique, and you can ask them questions anytime, I would suggest. I don't know if that helps any, but...
Well, the thing that puzzles me is when you, and I'm, the social media is, as you know, huge. In fact, the last meeting of, the last issue, for example, of our municipal magazine that we get, mentions the importance of social media. And if I am a developer in Hong Kong, or a developer in Russia, or a developer in anywhere in the world, the first thing I'm going to do is check out a web presence. When I put in Western Regional Enterprise Network Yarmouth, I'm not even getting a webpage. I'm getting a Facebook page that has 104 likes, which is kind of scary. I'd feel better if there was 10,400 likes. So I'm kind of wondering, what is, we're developing a strategic plan, which is, it seems to me like we're doing a lot of paper pushing here, and I'm looking at, I compare what's happening with REN with a good staff, compared to what's happening in Yarmouth with our one-person economic development officer, and I'm kind of thinking, holy mackerel, like, what exactly is happening here? And I, it's at the point, this has been around for a year, and today, we're reading a revised document that started out last year, and we have another document coming out tonight, and my question is, is I'd like to see some proof in the pudding here. And I mean, we can go in camera, I know we went on this before, but I, just to find out, are we actually looking for businesses, or are we simply trying to get strategic plans and all this pie-in-the-sky stuff, or are we actually going to start biting the bullet and trying to get some industry and some jobs and some materials happening in this town? Because these are questions I'm asked every day, and I imagine most of us around the table are asked, and, and of course, I'm a complete moron, I have to answer, I have no idea, I have no idea, because we don't know. So I know maybe Deputy Mayor has got some great insight on this one.
Go ahead, Deputy.
I can. I have from one of the members of the REN Board, a strategic plan, can, I'll email it to you. It's a 16-page document.
But, but just, just so, this document that we're dealing with now, it's, it's the intermunicipal agreement, we agreed on it. The only reason it's coming here now is because ERDT's gone, and some changes were made, so it's just paper, that's just purely making the changes so that it's visible there. That's, that's as simple as that. CAO?
Yeah, I was going to suggest, we've had Warner and Angelique, the Deputy Chair and the CEO here in the past, I think we can invite them back and get an update.
Sure we can.
For council. They have, they have been hiring, obviously, Angelique, it took quite a while to do the process to hire the CEO. She has an administrative support person, and one economic development officer has been hired. They have done, with the assistance of McSweeney and Associates, they've done a regional profile for the two counties that are covered by the REN, which, which in fact, our economic development officer is able to make use of, and we've done our own within the town. The strategy document is in draft, I don't believe that's a final document, but concurrently, they're working on the implementation plan for how they're going to deliver services as well. And I know, because Natalie is, is in regular contact with, with their staff, that they have engaged as well in business retention, expansion training, so they're, they're not out, I would say, I think I'm safe to say, they're not out there doing the economic doing yet. Perhaps Jill, their economic development officer, may be, but it's, it's just at very, at the very front edge of the doing. And, but I think it would be worthwhile, your worship, to bring Angelique and perhaps the Chair in to, to update council directly and answer any questions.
Yeah, no, I think they'd enjoy that, actually. Okay, go ahead, council.
Not, not to prolong this, well, you know, I think we've seen what they're doing so far, and from the Mayor's giving an excellent report, I'm more interested in the nuts and bolts on the economic development, that's what, that's what I'm into. I would, I really don't want to, with all due respect to the REN staff, to waste their time, and maybe my time, I only speak for myself, giving me the same stuff that we had before us now, that we're developing a strategic plan, we're doing this, we're doing that. How many more months or years is it going to take before the REN staff actually start looking for business? That's my question. When's, what's the timeline? Obviously, there's a board in place, they got a strategic plan.
Then we ask them what the timeline is. We ask them what the timeline is. But it may not just be their job to go out and look for business. As a matter of fact, I would suggest that's NSBI's job.
So what, what does REN do?
It's economic development, it's business retention and expansion, it's, it's those, it's some of that, but it's not the international piece, so they have to partner, they have to come together with the other agencies, but let's not, let's not forget that we say it's been a year, but it really, all the pieces have to come together. And they, because of what happened in the past, and I think you at the table are more aware, or more familiar with that than any of us, what happened in the past, we just, let's just do it right, pull all the pieces together, and, and we do have an economic development officer, as do many, you know, many of the other units. So the REN will be working on some bigger picture things, but they'll also be working on business retention and expansion, and the things that are, that are out there that we know they have to do. We can ask them what the timeline is.
I think it's important to get a timeline. I also think, looking at the Liaison and Oversight Committee, to me, that's a critical committee, because to me, that's the accountability committee, I would think, besides the board. My, and again, I don't know, and I haven't seen their strategic plan, I'm assuming that the board is setting performance standards. Like, so the board is saying, these are our economic expectations. I mean, if you are paying, and I've got no idea, I know we pay, what is it, $40,000 a year or something to this organization, is it in that range? Around $40,000. So we're paying $40,000. So I would like to be able to tell the taxpayers who I represent, which we represent them all, okay, for $40,000 a year, you are getting X. Or for $30,000 a year, you're getting Y. I mean, what is the value? I mean, if they suddenly come in and say, hey, we're going to build a cranberry bog, you know, out in Melbourne, yippee, that's great, that was money well spent. But if we've got an organization that's got a fair chunk of change as a budget, and there's no performance review, like, what is the return on the equity for, on our investment to the community? I think that's the question we've got to ask ourselves. You know, if we're investing in this organization $40,000, I'm expecting we're going to get at least our $40,000 a year back in some form of economic benefit. That's what I'm thinking, be it taxes, be it a new tax base, be it jobs in the community or whatever. So that's what I'm interested in, is what are those performance standards? And if they fail to produce those standards, then okay, what's the result?
Good. So we'll ask her about the timeline and the performance standards. If you want. Yep.
You do it.
Go ahead. One of you do it.
Make a motion.
I'll make, I'll make a motion that we invite the Executive Director of the REN and necessary support staff to update the council of the Town of Yarmouth on the performance review and on the timeline for economic development in southwest Nova Scotia.
Second. Okay, so we have a motion on the floor to approve this first. What's that? So, so with regard to the terms of reference, are we okay to, okay? Questions been called, all those in favor? Aye. Contrary? Motion carried. Okay. And with regard to the invitation? Questions been called, all those in favor? Aye. Contrary? Motion carried. Proposed changes to the Liquor Control Act. CAO?
Thank you, worship. So there are some proposed changes to the Liquor Control Act, and we are recipient of information concerning those proposed changes, and they're looking for comments from the public, or whomever wishes to, but I've circulated to council, it's there for your consideration if you wish to have any input.
Potentially a politically hot potato, but a very interesting hot potato. I would assume that what we would do is have like a public meeting on this, or ask for public input, is that the, what you're seeking? Or would we just, or we just, as a council, say aye or nay? This is, in the Town of Yarmouth in the past, and Deputy Mayor and I go back a ways, this has been, in the past, a relatively heated topic in the days of churches and prohibition and all this. Not that I go back to prohibition times, Jim might be bordering it, I don't know, but I would think this is something that we should really get some input and see what people want before we make a decision. Because what's happening here is the, the LCA, Liquor Control Act, is kind of dropping the ball in the municipal's lap, municipal governments' lap, to decide if a pub is going here, or a pub is going there, and alcohol served here or there. The one that's interesting, that caught my eye, was the fact that you can provide two drinks to a customer without the requirement to order food, which is an interesting item, which is, you know, just a sidebar that any restaurant could order, they could have two drinks, and drinks aren't really specified as to what is a drink. So, just as a thought for drinking and driving and that sort of thing. So just, I don't know what, what the intention is here.
Go ahead, Councillor Mackay-Zach.
Well, I, I look at it a different way myself. I mean, I think they want to move into the 21st century, I don't think there's anything wrong with that. If you're going to a restaurant, you want a drink, or two drinks, or three drinks, you're going to have them regardless. But you know, because you, people nowadays, the overwhelming majority drink responsibly. There's, there's the days of going out drinking and drinking and driving, I think a few and far between, if you look at the bars and everything that's around there, there's not many bars or anything around here that are, that are left. I don't think it's a bad idea, I have, I have no problem with this, this at all, they're only asking for input. I, I thought if we put it on our website, and have the public commit to, maybe give them a chance to read on it, read it, and look at it, and they can comment on it if they wish. I, just, just a thought, but I really, I don't see anything wrong with, with coming into the 21st century. If I go to a restaurant, if I want a glass of wine, or a beer, or two beer, I'm going to have it. At, at home, if I want to have a glass of beer, or a glass of wine, or two glasses of wine, I'm going to have it. So I, I don't see anything wrong with it, really. I don't think, I think it's well thought out, and I don't think it steps on anybody's toes, or it's just coming into the 21st century, so that's just my thought on it. But I'll ask Jeff, is this going to be put on our website, our comments? I don't think we have to have a public meeting or anything like that, myself personally.
Okay, so UNSM, your Executive Director, had asked, because they were asked by the province to request councils to consider these changes, and so I guess there's probably at least three ways that you could deal with this. One is that you could, you could take, I think what Councillor Mackay-Zach is saying is, is reach out to the public and gather some feedback, bring that feedback to you folks, and let that inform your collective position on it. You could, the councillor has articulated his point of view and his, you know, how he feels about it. You could discuss how you individually feel about it, based on your values and your perspective, and see if you could arrive at a, at a position for the council. Or you could say that, you know, we have maybe different opinions, and leave it to the councillors individually to, to make those comments to government. Those are at least three options for you, and there may be others. So I didn't come in with a, with a, we should do this kind of, in order to, for you to make a decision, it's really if you want us to do work to help you inform that decision, we're more than willing to.
Councillor Mooney?
Yeah, thank you, your worship, and thanks, Jeff, and I agree with Danny, Councillor Mackay-Zach. We got one question, though, Jeff, on number one. Legislative amendments not to be proclaimed for one year to allow municipalities to introduce zoning or bylaws to restrict any areas that are currently dry, that would like to remain dry. Do we have any of those sections in town, except for residential?
So, so in our, in our land use bylaw, we, we list uses under every zone, and it is not in every zone that you can have an establishment that serves alcohol. So I'm looking at the planner, I'm thinking industrial, perhaps, certainly residential. But under these regulations, what, what is being suggested is they would give towns time to consider, or municipalities time to consider amendments to our, to our land use bylaw, our zoning requirements, so that we could go through the process and consider areas of our area, of our jurisdiction, where council felt it was inappropriate to have liquor license, then we could put in place the restrictions. So much like, we can't prohibit a legal activity in the town, but you can control where it occurs. So whether it's medical marijuana growing, or whether it's adult entertainment places, these are, these are legal activities that may not be suitable for all areas of town. And what the government is saying is that they have taken the lead in terms of where liquor licenses have been permitted in the past. In the future, there's, they're passing that to municipalities to decide, and they're giving you a year to think about that question and put in place restrictions before they lift theirs.
What about a question? We got the 2015 Canadian National Alzheimer's Baseball Championships, and I know the last one, that they had a beer garden, I think, down on Forest Street, so they would have had to apply to the province for what, special permit license? But that, because it's on town-owned property, or municipally-owned property, we'd have to agree with that? That, okay, I got you. But I think it's a great idea, what Councillor Mackay-Zach said, to put the, put it up on the website and to get some feedback, I think, from the general community.
Go ahead.
Looking at it in retrospect, and I think, after hearing what the CAO's explanation is, I think it's something that we as a council probably don't want to come as a council on behalf of everybody in Yarmouth with a recommendation, one way or the other. I think Danny is quite right. Put it on the website, invite people to make their own submissions, and if we as individual politicians want to make our submissions, we should be free to do it. But I hate to see us as a council send a message, yea or nay, on such a thing, I think it's something that the individual's going to have to decide, and the province is going to legislate it whether or not the Town Council of Yarmouth does X, Y, or Z, unless they have a backlash of other municipal units. So I agree, just put it on the website, put it on the social media, say, hey, this is in the works, what do you think? Contact your local M L A, and God bless you.
Go ahead.
Totally agree with that point of view. The one thing, though, that I think you're perhaps uniquely positioned to comment on is just really that, I'll call it the download, I don't know if that's what they intended it to be, but it is a downloading of responsibility for deciding where licenses are not appropriate. Right now, they have that responsibility, they hold the hearings, they receive the input, and what they're saying is they'll no longer be involved in that process, that it will come down to the municipal level. So you might be uniquely positioned in order to comment on that, taking on that responsibility, or maybe you prefer that the province continues their process and keeps it out of, out of the municipal hands. That, that would be one question I would think you could comment on.
And further to that question, I would personally like to get the advice of our planner on that, because the planner has seen the, she knows the ins and outs, and she's got that experience, I think maybe it's something that, not to put onus on Caroline, but she sees the development potential, yea or nay, and I agree with you on that, that's probably is a unique position, but I think we should have a good informed position on that, and maybe, I'd like to make a motion that the Town Planner, Caroline King, prepare a, an information document for council with regard to the zoning of liquor outlets in various parts of the Town of Yarmouth for council's consideration.
Go ahead.
I just, I do want to make, I'm very happy to do that. Just, just to make sure everybody fully understands, right now, while we don't regulate whether, we don't necessarily regulate liquor license, we do still regulate uses. So right now, if a restaurant applies for a liquor license, we're asked to confirm what kind of uses are permitted there. So if it's, if we only allow restaurants, and we don't allow taverns and lounges, then the liquor license that, that that business is eligible for is the one where they have to have food with their alcohol. So right now, we do so, sort of regulated ourselves through that process, and we do have in our land use bylaw where we allow taverns and lounges through development agreement, for the most part. There's not a lot of places where we allow them to happen, just as a right.
Good. Questions been called, all those in favor? Aye. Contrary? Motion carried. So do we need, you want a motion to put that on the website, or?
We can, if you want to make a motion, we'll do that and we'll inform the people.
Okay.
So moved.
Okay. Yep. Seconded, discussion? Questions been called, all those in favor? Aye. Contrary? Motion carried. Linda, that was, you know what that is, okay? We done with that one there? All righty. REN Liaison and Oversight Committee Terms of Reference. CAO?
So your worship, this kind of spills out of So, Your Worship, this kind of spills out of the, out of the intermunicipal agreement is the actual creating of a terms of reference for the L and O liaison and oversight committee. So this document was generated by the REN and is, again, being circulated to the six municipal partners for their consideration and hopefully approval.
Good. So we're looking for a motion to approve. Go ahead. Oh.
I had a concern.
Maybe I'll bring it up. On page one, there's a piece in there that concerns me, because this council has discussed it, and this has also been a discussion at UNSM, and this has been turned down at UNSM. And that is the phrase, "Meeting attendance is considered valid if the member is physically present." And here's the kicker, "Or assesses the meeting via telephone, Skype, or other technology." So as a result, nobody has to be in the room for a meeting.
Yeah, so they phone in.
Exactly. They only meet twice a year, and they can't make two meetings a year. That kind of bothers me. And this is the Liaison and Oversight Committee, which is one of the most powerful committees of REN, the way I'm reading this document, and you don't have to go to the meeting place. I mean, to me, I think body language is a very important thing at a meeting, and especially if it's the Liaison and Oversight Committee. I'm just curious why that is.
Do you want to?
Yeah, I'll take a stab at that. Our understanding has always been is that electronic attendance is not legal. Lawyers for other municipalities differ in their opinion on that, and it hasn't been challenged, there's no court decision on it, it's simply legal opinion. So the L and O committee, because some of the member municipalities have the advice that this is acceptable, that they agreed because of the geography to put that in. Now, I tend to agree with the councillor that physical attendance at the meetings is of best value and provides for the best opportunity for clear communication and participation. I wouldn't encourage, and, you know, we don't do this, and any of our committees allow for electronic participation, so I wouldn't suggest that we, that we, as the town, should accept that as our standard for participation. But it's there, and if others wish to avail themselves under this terms of reference, they certainly could. So you could end up with a municipality that believes and actually functions in that way, that some members participate by Skype or telephone, and that may be the way they choose to participate in that committee, under these terms of reference.
So we, and we've had that happen, because we haven't been meeting twice a year. Obviously, we've been meeting a lot more often than that. But from my perspective, they've called in and spoken clearly and had their say, and it worked for us. It's worked so far for us, but that's up to this council to decide if we want to go with that. Go ahead, councillor.
Well, the other thing that I was curious about, there's nowhere in this document, or any of the documents on REN, I may be missing, Your Worship, you say everything's open, that it is open. Who can attend these meetings, besides the directors?
Well, I assume anyone can attend them. Go ahead.
Yeah, so the REN is a municipal corporation formed by the municipal agreement, and so it is governed by the MGA, and would require, be required to follow all the same rules as our council, as an example. So the meetings are open. They're not necessarily advertised, that's not a requirement of the act, but they are open.
Go ahead.
Could we, as council, be informed of meeting dates and times and places?
Sure.
And I'd like to make that a motion, so it's in the books, that a letter be written to the executive director of the REN for Southwest Nova, that the meeting dates, places, and times for each REN meeting be distributed to our council.
Moved and seconded.
Question?
Yep, go ahead.
For clarification, I guess I'm asking whether, whether we're talking about the Liaison and Oversight Committee that we're talking, that the terms of reference is for, or whether we're talking about the REN board. And my reason for asking that is that we made the conscious decision when we began down the road of creating the REN, of not appointing any municipal politicians to the REN board, to keep sort of the parochial politics out of their decision-making process. So I would suggest that it would probably be the most appropriate place to attend at the Liaison and Oversight Committee, and not necessarily at the REN board, that our communication with the REN board should be through the chair, through presentations to council, or through the L and O committee.
My interest is that if we have, I'm not interested in attending the meetings, I mean, as such, I'm hoping that we'll get some reports, but I'm thinking if a member of the public, or a business developer, would like to attend the meeting just to get some information, or a prospective business developer, you know, is, I mean, this is supposedly a welcoming agency that we're trying to welcome economic development in Southwest Nova, and to me, I think nothing would be more impressive for a new business or a industry in this community to be able to know that they're friendly, and that our community is very friendly, and that we're very open, and that they're more than welcome to attend a meeting of the REN. I think, and I would say more into the board of directors meeting as such, if they wish to, just to pop in for a few minutes and see it, I think would be a very positive experience, because we get some excellent people on that board.
I think they are. Yeah. Did you hear what he just said?
Yeah.
Yeah.
The motions are passed.
Yeah. Counselor McIsaac?
Thank you, Your Worship. I too have a concern on the Skype or telephone, I'm just reading here, members, "Meeting attendance is considered valid." That's, you can vote on Skype or by telephone, and that's considered valid? I know at the UNSM, as councillor Landell has stated, that it was voted down, that that's not the proper way, it wasn't the way that we should, we should be doing things, by, either by Skype or by phone, or by email. So I have concerns with this one here. So I'd like to, I'd like to see us, I really have a concern with that, because that's going down a slippery slope. Either you're for it on UNSM or you're not, according to this. This just opens up a can of worms. So I can't support this part of the document. So I don't know how that's going to work. So I've got to take that part out for me to support it. And that's the only thing that I worry about, because, I mean, I could be laying down on the beach in Florida, or even Mexico, like one of the senators for seven years, and just phone in, phone in every now and then and say, I'm going to vote for this, or go on Skype. I mean, it's been done, right? They do it. No, I think, I think if you're going to vote for anything, and you're going to go to the meetings, you should be present, or your vote shouldn't count, one or the other. That's just my thought. There's nothing wrong with going televised and listening to a meeting, presentation, stuff like that, but if you're not there to participate, your body form with other people, then I feel strongly that you really shouldn't have that, you really shouldn't have that vote. That's just my personal opinion. I won't be supportive of that part of the section, so.
Go ahead.
Yeah, so just for clarity, is the concern that our member would take the opportunity to not participate in person? Because we can, we can manage that regardless of what the REN permits, we can manage that through our own policy. Or is that you don't want other municipalities to take advantage, other municipalities representatives to take advantage of Skype or other technology?
May I? I'm not, I'm not going to speak for other municipal units. The UNSM speaks, had spoken, and we spoke as a united force at a UNSM conference last year, that we turned, we turned this part of it down unanimously at the meeting we were at. But far as myself goes with this, I would like to think that our member would be there to vote in person, rather than phone in a vote, or Skype it, or whatever. That's what, that's the way I would prefer to have it. But I'm not going to speak for the member or the rest of the council, I'm speaking for myself. I voted at UNSM the way that I thought it should be, and along with the other councillors, and it was a majority, so.
Go ahead.
But I also hear what the CAO is saying, we really, in fairness, can't dictate what another council or councillor does. Yes, we can police ourselves, which we do, but for us to say to some other unit who does allow this process, albeit that we don't agree with it, really can't do much. I mean, I will support this with tongue in cheek, in hopes that our member, I believe the mayor, will take back our concern, and quite strongly state the position of this council, and since you are the member of the executive of UNSM, to point out to this board that UNSM has flatly turned down this policy, and that we should be in line with UNSM. I mean, we're either with them or we're not with them.
Okay, so what's next? Go ahead.
So if there are any other concerns, we should talk about those as well. But as far as this specific issue goes, you know, we could, we could defer a decision if council felt strongly that we should be in line with UNSM, and that we shouldn't allow in any way, shape, or form electronic participation of that board. Or we could, we could pass it and just simply self-regulate and tolerate, I guess, others using something that we don't necessarily agree with. Or we could pass it, and we could bring back our opinion that we would, because of the infrequency of the requirements for meetings and the importance of the body that we're all contributing significant dollars to, that we would value physical participation, physical presence, and ask them to reconsider that.
I don't think, I just want to say this, I don't, I don't think once we get to the two meetings a year, which should start soon, I don't think it'll be an issue, but we've had, we've had quite a number of meetings to try to get us up and running, and so my concern is that I don't want to miss what, you know, the provincial seat is saying, I don't, because they can't make it, or something happens there. That's, that's a concern, because I know when they've called in, what they say is of tremendous value, and it's, I understand the UNSM piece, I really do. I guess I've experienced that meeting with, with no hiccups whatsoever, with professionalism, with everybody speaking their piece. So I don't have a problem with it as it is, but I can bring, I'm the chair of the liaison and oversight, so I can, I mean, I'll bring that back anyway. So, all right. Yeah, please.
I'll just offer one other, one other comment. I routinely decline opportunities to participate in AMA committees, because they usually meet for about two to three hours, usually somewhere central in the province, which means an entire day of my time to participate, and I don't feel that I have that kind of time to give. So when I do agree to participate in committees, it is always on the condition that I can participate electronically, using Skype. And so I have, I have participated in the indicators committee, but all of my participation, I never participate in person, always, always through the computer in order to make the best use of my time and energy, so just thought I'd throw that in.
And I see that, if you're looking at a provincial committee, I mean, but my goodness, we're a small little into the, I mean, the worst, the worst-case scenario is a two-hour drive from somebody to Shelburne to Digby, I mean, that's reality. For most of us, it's going to be a one-hour drive, worst-case scenario.
But we have the business, what I'm saying is, is right from the province, so we have somebody from NSBI sitting, or we have, we have the new business department sitting, those.
So are they, is this their concern? Are they the ones that use this Skype and?
Yeah, yeah. They have, but they've been when they can. But what I'm, all I'm saying is, is that we've had a number of meetings that we've called within a couple of days, and it's okay for Ben to come from Digby, or somebody to come from Barrington, but it's not so easy to get them on their schedule. They can take the hour or two, but they can't just clear their schedule for the whole day for a, for a quick meeting. So that's, and it's worked, and I really, I just don't want to miss what they have to say, because they can't make it, but, so, go ahead, councillor.
But when you're talking about municipal affairs or any other agency that's assisting us with the REN, they're not voting members, right?
Yeah, they, do they, they have a?
I don't think, I don't think somebody would, from Department of Economic Development, be voting.
We just changed that, and yeah.
Yeah, they're voting.
Yeah. So.
I think they should be in the room anyways.
Yeah.
You're going to bring those concerns back to the?
Oh, I'll bring them, I'll bring them back. I don't know, I'll definitely bring them back.
And the other thing, Your Worship, maybe to the CAO, is, could we get a copy of the Town of Kentville's council meetings, what they do, because I believe that they have people that Skype in. Now, even though it was defeated at the UNSM, that's not, that's not binding anyways, right? That was a resolution, I believe.
No, it's just, yeah, suggestion.
And it'd be interesting to see also, CAO, what other municipal units in the province of Nova Scotia use Skype for their regular council meetings or committee of the whole. If that's possible?
Sure.
Yeah. Good. Go ahead, one more.
In light of that, Your Worship, I'd like to make a motion that we defer the decision on this policy until such time that the CAO provides us with the items requested by councillor Mooney, and also the responses from our representative on REN as to the feedback, as to the justification for the Skype and social media.
Seconded. Moved and seconded. Any more discussion? Question's been called. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Contrary? Motion? Yes?
Yes.
Yeah. Okay. Request for decision, surplus schools. CAO?
Thank you, Your Worship. So last year, council, Town Council submitted to UNSM a resolution concerning the fate of surplus schools, and the resolution was passed by the membership of UNSM. And the most recent update we've received from the province in response to that resolution was that Department of Municipal Affairs is talking to Department of Education about it. Recently, I was contacted by the CAO of Annapolis. They've recently been the proud recipients of a school of their own, and they are as thrilled as any municipality would be, and they're wondering if we were planning to resubmit the resolution, so that it was clear that we are still very concerned, that discussion isn't exactly meeting our expectations, and they were willing to sponsor a identical resolution if we submitted ours.
Good. Councillor Mooney?
Your Worship, I'd like to make a motion to jointly submit a resolution with the Town of Annapolis in regards to receiving assistance in redeveloping and demolishing surplus school buildings.
Moved and seconded. Councillor McIsaac?
Thank you, Your Worship. My question to Jeff, CAO. Jeff, you think we should send this out to the other municipal units and ask for their support, see how they feel about this? Didn't we do that the, did we do that the first time we sent this? Councillor Landell drafted this up?
We, I don't know if we communicated with all the municipalities or not.
You think it'd be a good idea?
It did get passed at UNSM, so majority present supported it, but we certainly can send it out and ask every municipality to consider.
Because we're bringing it up again, right?
Yes.
And I, when you're there, you do some networking and stuff, and they, some of them read it, some of them don't, some conversations, I wish I would have known, know more about it, I would have really supported this, so blah, 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 you know, I would go with that.
We put together a little package, including, I think we referenced the policy from Department of Health or continuing care, and we can copy that, and I can speak to the CAOs, at least electronically, about the resolution, see if we can garner some.
So you think it'd be a good idea to do that perhaps?
Yeah, absolutely.
Okay. I don't think you need a motion for that or anything, do you, or?
Just a motion whether or not you plan to submit it, and then we can go from there.
Okay. I'll leave it up to councillor Landell with that. Thank you.
Good. Councillor Landell?
I have a little problem with the motion as councillor has worded it. We, when looking at this, I think the whereas is where. at this, I think the whereas is work. However, the therefore be it resolved may have to be changed because according to the response that we've got back, we're no longer the Department of Education, it's education, early childhood development, and we also are looking at the Department of Transportation Infrastructure Renewal, and we're looking at municipal affairs. So we now have three departments in the mix, whereas in the old resolution, we only had one. This is before they did the restructuring. So I would suggest to the mover and the seconder that the resolution reflect that for clarity's sake. And the rest of the process, and I think the, in the preamble, I would suggest that we're, in the actual title, you're basically, you're requesting UNSM for a reaffirmation of this resolution. So you're not really submitting a new resolution, you're asking them to reaffirm the resolution so it's put on the floor. So if the mover and seconder agreed to that, then that would be a little cleaner way to submit it.
Your worship, thank you for that, councillor Landall. I was hoping for some help from that because you're the one that crafted the last resolution that went to the Union Nova Scotia Municipalities and there wasn't a hand that didn't go up. So that was, I think that was the only one that was really unanimous in the, out of all the resolutions. So thank you for that. And I think this concerns every municipal unit right across the province. So call for the question.
Question's been called. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Contrary? Motion carried. Council Advisory Committees, Committee of the Whole, Deputy Mayor. Go ahead.
Number one, I move that Raymond Gedet be invited to a meeting of the Committee of the Whole to make a presentation regarding challenges we are facing with smoking in public areas in Yarmouth and advise us of some possible solutions.
All moved. Moved and seconded. Discussion?
Question?
Question's been called. All those in favor?
Aye.
Contrary? Motion carried.
I move that as recommended by the town engineer, option three be chosen whereby trucks will stay in their own lane on Water Street and cross over into the left lane on Vancouver Street before turning right onto Main Street without moving the monument, requiring the radius of the curb on the corner to be altered with a tapered three-meter portion of the green area lost on the corner.
Moved and seconded. Discussion? Question's been called. All those in favor?
Aye.
Contrary? Motion carried. Deputy?
I move that correspondence from Ville de Quebec de Francophone Network be referred to the municipalities of Argyle and Clare for their consideration.
Moved and seconded. Discussion?
Question?
Question's been called. All those in favor?
Aye.
Contrary? Motion carried.
I move that a policy of $300 be for the production of a deed and registering the deed for all properties sold at tax sales be approved.
Moved and seconded. Discussion?
Question?
Question's been called. All those in favor?
Aye.
Contrary? Motion carried.
I move...
By a couple of us?
I move that Michael Wilson be appointed to sit on the Heritage Advisory Committee.
Moved and seconded. Discussion?
Question?
Question's been called. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Contrary? Motion carried. Deputy?
Last one, the number six. I move that the town of Yarmouth support the request for funding up to $2,500 for the Nova Scotia Boat Racers Association competitive race to be held on August the 8th, 2015. But in the meantime, if other agencies and municipalities agree to financially support this event, the town of Yarmouth will fund the difference.
Moved and seconded, and we've got a different number now. Yes, we're down to 1,400. Go ahead.
My question is to the CAO. Geoff, do we have the money for this? Are we going to take a lot of our surplus, not our surplus, but our...
Reserve.
Do we have the money, for one thing? I'll ask the question after.
Yes, spoke with our Director of Finance and through just a slight change in process in terms of issuing statements on our financial accounts, we're able to save enough money to cover this.
Cover this, okay. And the only reason why I ask, because this came up, I mean, it's a good idea. So was Houdini a good idea, but we told him to come back next year, right? Not that this couldn't come back next year, because boats are boats, you know, boats can sail and race anytime, right? I mean, the 11th hour, this is what happens. I mean, there's lots of good ideas out there, but if we're going to continue to fund after we do the funding, that we already give our funding, then we gotta have a serious talk around this table to, either we gotta put money aside or whatever, and that's not a bad idea. There's nothing wrong with supporting something like this, but we gotta have the monies and not, it comes at the 11th hour. We've already, everybody said what they said, stated their case, that we can't do this, continue doing this anymore, but here we are. We're doing it more. So I guess we should really, as a council, set some policy here. So, because there's going to be probably lots of more of these real good ideas coming up. Our development officer, should that have gone through our development officer rather than coming here? That's another question. No, no, I'm not saying about grants, but I mean, the idea of what's coming here, maybe that could have went through there, she could have presented it or whatever, how it works.
Could have gone through YASTA, it's an event.
Yeah, yeah, or, yeah, or something like that. So I, I mean, I'm not going to vote against it, but I'm not 100% for the process that we're dealing with. I don't think we should be doing this because it sets a precedence, even though it's a good thing, but we've already talked about this and I just, I'm just concerned that, there's lots of good ideas out there and we're going to continue to do this and we ought to have preparations and money put up there for these occasions. That's just my thought. Thank you.
Councillor Landall?
Yeah, the, just a couple of points. From a motion point of view, I don't think, and the CAO can play lawyer here at this point, I don't think that we can amend a motion that's coming from a committee. I think only the committee can amend the motion. And the way the motion is worded now works because we're not committing 2,500, we're committing up to 2,500. And although the amount has changed and is going down, and it could go down even lower from what I understand in talking to Carol Hill today, she was meeting with another sponsor this afternoon, I'm most hopeful we wouldn't have to pay anything. So that is there. And I also met with her discussing funding for next year where there is money that's available. Other areas have taken advantage, as we have in the past, with the, again, Canadian Heritage. Apparently, this is the only boat race that they've ever participated in from Barrington that does not have federal funding. So the federal government really does fund these quite heavily. So for next year, I would hope that we will not see her in this group requested. So I think we should support the motion as is. We're not committing as such, we're committing up to an amount. And as the mayor very properly said, we're off the understanding that it's now down to above 1,400. She raised an additional 1,100 as of today, but I understand it could be more this afternoon. The mayor moved, so I'm a little reluctant to change that number figure, leave it there and see how it goes, you know what I mean?
So when, CAO, when do they get the money? Because, go ahead.
Well, it would be great if we had a clear decision because the recommendation was made at a time when she was tasked from Committee of the Whole to go and find other funds from corporate and other municipalities, and then we would consider the question here. I believe you, the recommendation from a committee is just that, it's a recommendation and it's tabled, it's put on the table, in this case by the chairman and the second. And now the question is council's. The question is yours. And if in your deliberations, you wish to make an amendment to the original question in order to approve a decision, I think you're well within your rights to do that. I don't think you have to take the advice or reject the advice of a committee. I think you can shape it.
So what are you thinking? Not what he's thinking, what you're thinking.
Well, then why don't we, if we, if given the CAO, ask to amend the amount to 1,500?
1,400.
Well, change it to 1,500, just in the off chance something blows up or something. Nice round number. So I'd make a motion that we amend the amount to 1,500.
Okay, so... It's up to, and how long do we, how long do we do? I'm going to, I'm going to be, I'm with you, councillor Mackay-Zip. I, I think if we're going to keep doing this, the precedent is being set so that, so that there ends up being a lineup of people coming in for money that really we don't have. And although you guys are great at finding it, thank you, it gets harder and harder. I mean, it's not, it's not an easy thing to do. And yeah, and so I'm, it's a great event. We could do it again next year. I think it'll happen this year. I also hope that the other 1,400 shows up. Because I'm just, as much as, as much as you would take a beating if you just say, "We just can't fund these", the money has to come from somewhere. One taxpayer and not much, not much play-around room, so I'm not in, it's not, it's not the event I'm not in favor of. I'm not in favor of continuing to come up with money that really we have to keep searching for. Go ahead, councillor.
I had a long chat with Mrs. Hill on this recently, and I'm curious about the background. And the bottom line is, is these speedboats have been dying for an opportunity to get into Yarmouth, and they're making Yarmouth as part of a competitive event. This is an opportunity for us to bring a lot of people. It's interesting that we didn't want to spend $5,000 on fireworks for a show that lasted 10 minutes or less. Yet, on the other hand, we have an event here that's going to be in the afternoon, that's going to bring, I believe it is close to 20 different speed, high-speed boats in a competition for an eventual cup that's going to last for several hours. To me, it's money well spent that's going to bring in a lot. According to her, and in doing some research with the other communities that have had this, it attracts literally thousands of people to the waterfront. And that's something, to me, is a wise investment. We've invested, I would say, a little, I can be corrected by CAO, but a little over 10,000 into, for example, the Seafest activities, which is a number of activities that do bring in a lot of people. So I have no problem supporting this because I think the bang for the buck is there. And this motion, basically to me, I'm optimistic. She, for example, got a contribution from Argyle. Argyle made a contribution, and then she just went to a fish plant in Argyle who just simply doubled the amount. So the community is very on board with this one because it's a very popular event. I'm optimistic, and I may eat my words, but I think she's going to raise it all. You know, to be honest with you, there's a lot of people wanting to get on the bandwagon with this one. This is going to be one heck of an event. It's a winner. And I think you're going to see a lot of people on that one. If she doesn't, well, she'll be pretty close to it. And as for next year, I don't think you're going to see her back because I think when people see this thing happen in Yarmouth Harbour and the merchants downtown see the people that are going to be in this community, there'll be no problem funding this event ever again. So that was just my thought. And it actually is going to be a competition, she said. I think they're calling it the Yarmouth Harbour Cup. So it's going to be actually a race. So that's, you can just imagine what that's going to mean for people. A lot of people love these high-speed boats.
There's no doubt it's a great event. And we can't, we can't not have it. It's just, we have to be careful. I guess I'm saying, let's be careful to hand over money before everything is exhausted. Because that's, that's fair. It's really easy sometimes to just, to just look for, to just look for us to support. And we can't, we just can't always do it. Councillor Mackay-Zip?
Thank you, your worship. Yeah, just, just to let councillor Landall know, I mean, it's not that I'm not going to support it.
Oh, yeah, me too.
No, and that, I have every intention of supporting it, but I just, we have to be more thoughtful, and you are, you are, we all are, but we just can't keep continuing on going the way we do it. So when I say we have to set some policy in place, I think that that will cure what's needed to be done. So perhaps we, maybe in the next Committee of the Whole, we could probably look at that or whatever.
Not to belabor this, but I think what we need to do, and we did it, when we created that extra 10,000 contingency, and this year, we kind of expended it very quickly. The idea of having that extra fund set aside in the grants organization is wise because we do have some opportunities like this one that come up at the last minute. And there's not much, not much we can say about it, but unfortunately, we gobbled up that amount quite quickly, I believe. So, pardon? We cut it, that's right, we cut it. So, you know, it's something we may want to look at that as well when we get closer to the grants for organizations in the fall.
Good. Question's been called. All those in favor?
Aye.
Contrary? Motion carried. Citizen Advisory Committees, Planning Advisory. Deputy Mayor? Are you good, you're ready? Okay, good. So we're at the Citizen Advisory Committees.
Thank you, your worship. From the Planning Advisory Committee of June the 17th, one item, I move to proceed to a public hearing in order to consider, and if deemed advisable, enter into a development agreement with the developer Ocean Breeze Estates for a four-unit dwelling unit, for a four-dwelling unit building on a lot to Argyle Street, and to concurrently amend the land use by law to extend the Argyle Street collector classification to Ellis Road as outlined in Caroline's report.
Moved and seconded. Discussion?
I think Caroline maybe wanted to comment.
Caroline?
So, I think it's working, yeah.
You're on.
I found out some new information today about this one. So Ocean Breeze Estates would like to enter into a development agreement with the town to build a four-unit residential development on the corner of Argyle and Ellis Street. It's a beautiful property. It's got a nice rock wall and lots of vegetation. This property used to be part of 187 Argyle Street, which is currently a seniors home. And there's a development agreement on that property in order to allow that use there. And I discovered today that as, it's not registered on Lot A, the property that's in question, it's registered on the parent property, but in that development agreement, there was a clause put in. The intention was that if the lot was ever subdivided, which it was, into three lots, that the newly-formed lots would follow the land use by law, be subdivided following our subdivision by law, and they would follow our land use by law as low-density residential. But when the development agreement was written, they copied and pasted what those provisions would be right into the development agreement instead of stating to follow the land use by law, which means that we can only have low-density residential uses on this property. So until that's amended, we can't enter into this development agreement with Ocean Breeze Estates. This development agreement that is in question this evening is time-sensitive. There's a condition of sale on it, and if it takes, if we have to go back and go through a formal process to amend the existing development agreement at 187, so the seniors boarding home, then this deal might not go through. So I've, and I, our solicitor's not here tonight, I was hoping he was. I scoured the Municipal Government Act, and I think that council's within the right to make an amendment to this motion, this recommendation from the Planning Advisory Committee, to also, in addition to entering, going to a public hearing, to enter into the development agreement, to amend our street classifications map in our land use by law, we would also need to concurrently amend the existing development agreement at 187 Argyle Street to allow the lots that were subdivided to follow the land use by law.
Okay, so anybody that can repeat that?
So, so my question, Caroline, is, I think I understood what you were attempting to say or saying there. Is that a doable thing from your point of view?
Yes. And I called Morris before I came and he agrees. Yes, and I called Morris before I came, and he agrees, so...
You called?
I'm feeling pretty comfortable.
Morris?
Yes.
So, at this point, I'm comfortable with the changes that you're proposing tonight so that we can pass this motion. I wondered if anyone else has any comment?
Go ahead, Counselor.
Danny?
Thank you, Your Worship. My question is, if we, if we go, what you're suggesting, does the public have a chance to have a voice of concerns, their opinions?
Yes, the motion would be that we move to a public hearing.
And we're just going to speed things up? Is that what we're going to do, to make this work for this developer?
Typically, typically to do an amendment to a development agreement...
It takes three to six months?
We, yeah, we go through the Planning Advisory Committee first. However, as far as I can tell, we don't need to do that.
But council does have the authority to do this, right?
Yes.
Yes, right. Okay, so, yeah, okay, as long as the public has a, has a chance to speak on this, I have no problem with it, so just to let you know. Thanks.
Yes, please. Go ahead.
Yes, so the only step, as Caroline's indicated, that has been, that has been missed here inadvertently was asking the Planning Advisory Committee to consider amending the development agreement on the, a related parcel in order to enable this. They agree with the end result, which is to rezone this property to higher density. So, I would have to assume that they would have also agreed to amend that development agreement, and the public absolutely will have a chance to comment before the August council meeting. And any member of the Planning Advisory Committee that, for whatever reason, felt that they had something to comment on that would certainly be welcome too.
So, my final question with the discussion, do we have the proper, will, we have the proper motion that you can give, Linda, for proceeding?
I emailed it to her already, yeah.
Okay. No, don't want to read it out. No, I'm teasing you a little bit, that's all.
Okay, Linda, go ahead.
Okay, to proceed to a public hearing in order to consider, and if deemed advisable, enter into a development agreement with the developer, Ocean Breeze Estates, for a four-dwelling unit building on 2 Argyle Street, to concurrently amend the land use bylaw to extend the Argyle Street collector classification to Ellis Road as outlined in the planner's report, by adding, and to concurrently amend an existing development agreement on 187 Argyle Street to allow the subdivision of the parent lot for residential purposes in conformance with the town land use bylaw and development agreements.
Okay, seconded by Sandy. Question's been called. All those in favor?
Aye.
Contrary, motion carried. Thank you, Caroline. That's, wow.
Yeah.
It is a lot of work. It's a lot of great work. Okay, Deputy Mayor, you're on.
From our public hearing of earlier this evening, four items. I move to amend the land use bylaw to rezone 17 Ellis Road from low-density residential to high-density residential as outlined in Caroline's report.
So, moved and seconded. Discussion? Questions been called. All those in favor?
Aye.
Contrary, motion carried. Caroline, if you wave, if you, if you need to say something to either, any of these. Deputy?
I move to amend an existing development agreement at 80 Main Street to move fence two, described in Schedule B site plan, to the southern property line as outlined in Caroline's report.
Moved and seconded. Discussion? Call for the question? Questions been called. All those in favor?
Aye.
Contrary, motion carried.
I move to amend the MPS and the LUB to permit development agreements for multi-unit dwellings, expansions of existing apartments, and group dwellings to be considered on local streets as outlined in Caroline's report.
So, moved, seconded, discussion? Questions been called. All those in favor? Aye. Contrary, motion carried.
And the last item. I move to amend the MPS and the LUB to permit seasonal retail uses in all zones with the exception of residential and environmentally sensitive areas, and to concurrently amend the land use bylaw to rezone 43 Water Street from low-density residential to waterfront industrial as outlined in Caroline's report.
So, moved, seconded, discussion?
Questions?
Questions been called. All those in favor?
Aye.
Contrary, motion carried. I'm just, we just did 80 Main Street, number two. Yep. She's all looked after. Oh, okay, mine's on paper here, that's why you might have, yeah. Okay, Planning Advisory, reports for information. We have all these. There's no report from me. Questions for committee chairs? Anyone? Okay, addition, oh, sorry, Counselor, go ahead.
I just got a question, questions, as in three. We had a conversation yesterday, Jeff, how are we doing on our conversation that we had with...
So, the question had to do with the, if I can just talk about it?
Yes, go right ahead, yep.
So, the question had to do with our Streets and Sidewalks bylaw and our, I guess, our process around how we deal with street cuts and getting them repaved and so on. And so what I did is I reread the sections of the bylaw. It appears that there may be a way to expedite the fixing of a road cut in my interpretation of the bylaw, but I have flipped it to the solicitor for his confirmation. If he confirms, and if the property owner is agreeable, then I believe we can, we can act in a way to get that complaint on Water Street, oh, sorry, Main Street, fixed up.
Good.
Yes, yes.
And the other two?
The other two were with regard to dangerous and unsightly?
Yeah.
Yeah, so those have been referred to be reviewed by the...
Enforcement officer?
Enforcement officer. Presently, Mr. Allen is on vacation, so they've been passed to his backup.
The Grim Reaper.
Sorry?
Okay, yeah, thanks. Thank you very much.
So, they'll be looked into.
Okay, great, thank you.
Good. Any more questions? Additions? So, we are, there's only one. Counselor Mooney, elementary school?
Thank you, Your Worship. As everybody knows, the news over the last couple of days with the cuts at the Tri-County Regional School Board, I'd like to make a motion that the town of Yarmouth send correspondence to the Tri-County Regional School Board, Honorable Zach Churchill and Honorable Karen Casey, to reconsider the elimination of elementary school library positions.
Seconded. Moved and seconded.
And just to talk on that, Your Worship, this, especially in Yarmouth South and center town, they're losing their library position. This is a demographic that, if you listened and you've done a lot of work on the Nova Scotia Report with Danny Graham and Ray Iveney, report rebuilding the economy, and this is a crucial foundation for our young people. When we talk, we'll sit with Counselor McIsaac on Yarmouth Recreation, we're talking about ways to improve our youth, how to get them more involved, and I think this is a key component on, not only in their education, but also learning to be good citizens, learning to be good members of our community, learning to be good school, school members. And I think the outcry from this is starting to really, really, really happen right now. And I think us, you know, you don't want to get involved when it's another elected body making decisions with taxpayers' money, but I think this is crucial and incumbent upon us as elected officials here in the town of Yarmouth to take a stand on this decision by the school board. And I think maybe the, with the new school coming online here in the next couple of years, that they should reconsider their position and do what's right for the students, right? Because I guess their motto is about students first, so let's put that, let's put that into practice. Thank you.
Thank you. Counselor Angel?
Thank you, an excellent motion as well. The, I think the big concern here is that a lot of people are off the perception that the librarian sits there and checks out books and gives books to students, and that is so far from the truth, it's unreal. The school librarians are resource people for the students and a resource people for the students, help students with literacy, help students find resources, and in many cases, especially at the elementary level, nurtures the love of reading. Yarmouth should be really taking note of this decision by the board. As a former educator, I am appalled at the literacy rate in this community. It is not good, and I mean, it's when well-stated publicly that numeracy and literacy, not only in this community, but everywhere, is down. We can't fault the schools for that. I mean, we're into texting, we're into social media, we're into using OMGs and BFFs and code words for everything, but the reality is the only person in a school that helps promote the love of reading and understanding, in many cases, is the librarian because teachers are so heavily tasked with the multitude of other assignments that they have, with outcomes, assignments, et cetera. To save a few paltry dollars by cutting back the school librarians is really something that I really feel the board should reexamine. We're seeing that not only happening in this board, but in other boards. Here you have tremendous libraries, good resources built up, and as Counselor Mooney said, in areas such as Yarmouth South, and I can speak for Central School in my neighborhood, we've had some excellent librarians in that school who've done some excellent work. These librarians are gone. This decision, they're finished. So, who is going to pick up the slack in that school? I'll tell you who it's going to be. It's going to be the teachers. And the teachers barely now have time to breathe. I mean, this board is also cutting back teaching positions as well, which is also a concern, but we only have so many dollars. So, I think we should support this definitely, and not only should it be, we should be reinforced unanimously to show our support for those school librarians.
Okay, call for the question?
What's your question?
All those in favor?
Aye.
Contrary, motion carried. I have a question. Can we, so, so the Committee of the Whole starts at 1:00 on the 23rd. Is it easy to change it? It's not a big deal. Change it to 2?
Send over your mind for me.
Don't you regret the last one? Well, you're at, you're doing the Sports Heritage Museum.
I'm at 11:00.
At 1:00, according to this.
About 12:00, 12:00 is perfect.
Well, that's why I was, well, that's why I was asking.
It's 12:00, 12:00.
No, 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 that's why I was asking, because I, I mean, some of us might want to, it's CFest, some of us might want to do that. It's, Phil's doing the Sports Heritage Museum, he's doing the sports stories from 1 till 2. If we can wait till 2, then you can do that, and maybe we can go, go take it in, okay?
Sure.
So, we're good for 2:00? Linda, can you keep track of that? I'll forget.
[inaudible]
Okay, approval of invoices?
No more.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Contrary, motion carried, date and next meeting? No, I'm just looking, August the 11th?
What's the...
Oh, 13th, August 13th. And are we good in camera? Do we need to go back in camera? We're good, okay, so motion to adjourn.
Right.
Good.
Good, me.
Yep, thanks, everyone. So, CFest next week. It'll be a busy week.